I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 15th, 2020 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday.
Here.
Mumgarth. Gaines.
Here.
Glover. Jaworski.
Here.
Cluke.
Here.
Stube.
Here.
Ingberg.
Here.
Thank you.
Do you have the flag to put up on Zoom? Join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers, and it's also posted virtually on www.papillion.org. Just a few ground rules, the governor did allow virtual electronic meetings with COVID. Most of the council, I believe, six or seven of the eight are actually in chambers. Councilman Ingberg and myself are on virtually. I am not in chambers. I had a close contact with a confirmed positive, so I am quarantined. So this will be the first time trying to conduct the meeting virtually when everybody else is there. So appreciate the patience of the council members and the public that might want to talk. If everybody on Zoom could stay muted. And if we do get to a public hearing item with proponents and opponents, we'll walk through and first take the people that are in the room that may want to speak. Ms. Brown will kind of be my eyes and ears, and then we'll move to those virtually, and we'll take the time to get folks. Council members, since I'm looking at the squares, if you can just kind of raise your hand and maybe do a verbal if you are making a motion or a second, or if I miss you and you want to make a comment. I think I've got everybody in my tiles except for Mr. Gaines. You've moved out of my tile for some reason, so you may have to verbally let me know. Other than that, we've got a fairly short agenda, but we do have, I believe, some scouts with us, so periodically I may take some time to do just a little bit of education on what we're doing and why we're doing it. But with that, we've got a special presentation tonight. Chief Lyons, Lieutenant Young, if you want to come up to the podium. And while they're doing that, I've got an official proclamation that I would like to read. Proclamation: Recognizing the retirement of Lieutenant Stephen L. Young and honoring him for 38 years of its outstanding service to the city of Papillion. Whereas Lieutenant Steve Young started as a reserve officer and became a full-time officer on August 23rd, 1982. And whereas Steve began his career in law enforcement to the city of Papillion Police Department, where he was hired by Chief of Police Irvin Portis, and he continued his service under Police Chiefs Dan Hoynes, Leonard Halus, and current Chief Scott Lyons. And whereas, on December 21st, 1992, Steve was promoted to Sergeant, and November 9th, 2015, promoted to Lieutenant Operations Division Patrol B and D shifts. And whereas, he has served as a training officer for many of our younger officers, educating them on the necessity of fundamental and practical law enforcement while stressing the importance of teamwork. And whereas, Steve Young's 38-year commitment to public safety has left a legacy of character, integrity, and unrivaled dedication which will continue to have an impact on the city of Papillion for years to come and who will be remembered for making Papillion and its community at large a much safer, better place to live. Now therefore, a David P. Black, Mayor of the city of Papillion, do hereby present this proclamation to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Lieutenant Stephen L. Young for his service and countless contributions to the city of Papillion. Congratulations, Steve. Chief. Council chambers are muted. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Black, and City Council members for taking the time this evening to recognize Lieutenant Steve Young this evening. Many citizens are surprised right now to learn his full name and rank as he's known widely as Yogi. For four decades, Lieutenant Young has served this community at some of its darkest times, coldest nights, and always with a smile, kindness, and encouraging word. In my law enforcement career, I've worked with a few superstars in the eyes of the community. And Papillion, it's been Lieutenant Steve Young. Sorry. I get emotional. Almost every day I get asked, where's Yogi? I think most people believe he works every day, and that's even before I even leave my own driveway. He has become synonymous with the mere mention of the Papillion Police Department, and I believe everyone here will agree. We will certainly miss his words of wisdom, friendship, the most. And the men and women. The men and women of the Papillion Police Department have arranged a special recognition for Lieutenant Steve Young on Monday, January 4th. Yes. 2021. He's reminded us all year. And these events will be shown on social media, so stay tuned. Yeah, I'll let that settle in.
I know it's a short agenda tonight, and I'll try to make it even shorter, but I've got some things to say after 38 years. To Zoom or not to Zoom, didn't see that one coming. 38 years ago, we were scraping for a Bible for me to be sworn in on. It was in this building almost to this day that I was sworn in as a police officer. At that time, Mayor Mike Greco was the mayor, and I swore to give 100% 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And now physically and many would argue mentally, I can no longer do that. The journey was an incredible journey. One of the things we began to do shortly after being sworn in is alongside then Sergeant Steve Ingberg and several other law enforcement, we pursued a serial killer who was responsible for the deaths of Danny Joe Everly and Christopher Walden. That event would change Sarpy County forever, and you that were living in the county at that time. Now it ends the unforeseen pandemic that will unequivocally change the world forever. Between those two bookends, we made it through 9/11, witnessed the untimely death of several friends and the births of others, had conversations with first ladies, sports legends, and actors, and thanks to Chief Lyons, I was able to coordinate the visit of the sitting president. He said he gave it to me. I think I got it because I was the only Democrat in Sarpy County at the time, and he was a Democratic president. I also sat on a park bench more than once with a rock legend Ted Nugent, discussed career choices. But even better, I had the good fortune to share my days with the kindest, most incredible residents and employees of the world's greatest city. Law enforcement's constantly changing, and it's got to change. It's just part of the process. At the present time, our courtroom is the airwaves and social media. That's why I'm a little concerned about the social media that may forward. And the verdicts are almost instantaneous, but that's going to change. And anybody thinking of pursuing a career in law enforcement, I would strongly encourage it, if not here in Papillion. As an employee, what you don't realize is you're not just an employee, you're part of a team. And I've always tried to instill that in the young guys that come to work at Papillion. To do our job, we have to be able to work with mayors, city administrators, city councils, codes enforcement, firefighters. Yeah, Chief Boz, I said firefighters. Codes enforcement, planning, and the greatest groups of cop that you could ever assemble. I partnered every day with Jesus Christ. That's how I made it, supported strongly and unconditionally by my father and brothers and sisters and an incredible mother and father-in-law. I got critiqued, rebuked, challenged, and loved by my children, Amy and Tyler, and their families. And then if you don't know Debbie, anyone that doesn't think that after being married to me for 35 years, being married to a cop for 35 years earns her a special place in heaven. She put up with the late-night phone calls, the crazy schedules, and every day she would watch me squeeze my 28-inch waist into my gun my 28-inch waist into my gun belt and conduct a visual inspection, pat me on the ass, and push me out the door. And then there was a hug at the end of that same shift. Now it's my turn.
Is it asking to come on? Is this who I texted? Oh.
God bless you all.
Thanks, Yogi. Anything else, Chief Lyons?
Did you want to present?
Yeah. So Chief Lyons is holding the butterfly, and if people aren't aware, there's actually a patented, limited supply of those. We've had those made for a project, and they were uniquely designed for Papillion. And I think it was Parks Director Gowen, I believe, had the wisdom to protect it through a patent, and then the foundry only had a certain number of them made, so it is a limited run. And we give them out for very special occasions, so Yogi wanted to make sure you had one.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Mr. Ingberg.
If I could just take a minute, if I could, I wanted to say something to Yogi. It was my absolute privilege to be the first person to ever work a shift with Yogi. I was his training guy, so how he got to be as good as he is, I don't know. But from the very first night, which was really an exciting one, I could tell right away that he would be really good, but even I didn't realize how he would come to symbolize the department the way he has over the years. As I said, it was my privilege to work with him, both as a sergeant and lieutenant and the police chief. And I appreciate all that he did, and he set a fine example for everybody on the way to be a professional police officer. So thank you, Yogi. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Mumgarth, I think, did you have your hand up? Okay. Any other council members? Yogi, just share, right after I got into office, and I was trying to learn the organization, somebody pulled me aside and said, when it comes to the police department, that Yogi was the integrity and the integrity of the department, and that if I ever was questioning what was right or wrong or and what to do or trying to make a decision, look to Yogi, and that'd give you your direction. So wise words. So thank you again on behalf of the community. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick reminders. City Hall will close at noon on December 24th and will be closed on December 25th and January 1st. I hope everyone has a great holiday season and gets to enjoy time with family, even if it's remote. And here's hopefully to a better 2021 for us all. And another reminder that provided the City Hall renovation project is approved tonight, city staff will be moving to temporary office locations the last week of December and the first week of January. The goal is to not have any lapses in services. The staff will be busy moving office spaces during normally a quiet time of the year. And starting in February, in-person council meetings will be held at the Landing instead of City Hall, and council meetings will continue to be virtual through January 31st. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, just because we've got some scouts with us, I always like to take time for education. And I know, I think we've got some other just citizens who may usually not be in the meetings. When we go through the agenda, you'll hear ordinances and you'll hear resolutions. Very important distinction, a resolution is more of the council making an opinion or a policy statement. It is an official statement, and that's why there is a vote. But it's just, it's more of a policy, so it's a quicker action, and it can be done in one meeting. And so a resolution has generally a public hearing and a vote all at the same time, and that's a normal course of business. Then you'll hear about ordinances. Ordinances is actually establishing a rule or a law. And so that's a little bit more deliberative and slower. And to do an ordinance, you'll hear something called readings. We have to read it three times on three different days. And the purpose of it, the first reading is purely just an introduction. Some council member or a staff person wants to introduce an ordinance, and so somebody needs to put their name on it, and that's the council member that introduces it. When an item is introduced, nothing else is done with it that night, generally. The second reading is the next meeting. That's the public hearing. That's when we advertise for a public hearing, and it's the public's opportunity to speak on that item that a council member that introduced. Nothing else is done after the public hearing, generally. And the third reading, the third meeting, is when the council discusses and votes. That can be sped up and done in one or two meetings, but that takes a supermajority of the city council to waive those. So it's not done on a regular basis, but it is in the rules. It can be done. Then the last thing you'll see on the agenda, and it's actually the next item, is the consent agenda. If there are items on the agenda that are generally routine in nature, such as paying the bills or non-controversial, we can put those on the consent agenda, take one vote, and handle all of the items at once. However, any council member has the absolute right to pull something off of the consent agenda to make it a standalone item. So just kind of a quick education on the process. I think some people think things get pushed through fast sometimes, but it's difference between an ordinance and a resolution and consent. So with that, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilwoman Cluke. And then second by Councilman Glover. And just for the note, Councilman Gaines, I can't see you, so you'll need to speak up if you're doing one. And Mr. Stube, your camera is off as well, so you'd have to speak up. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have anybody that wants to speak on behalf of a consent item? Anybody in the council chambers, Ms. Brown?
No.
And I don't see anybody online looking to do it either. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines.
Yes.
Glover. Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
8A0NAs.
Motion passes. Next is item D1. An ordinance to require the wearing of facial coverings under certain circumstances to abate the COVID-19 epidemic. Before I ask for a council member to introduce, again, just for education, because it can get confusing, I want to explain this one real quick. Because we already handled this one, where we did introduce a mask mandate. When the mask mandate was originally put forth, it had a date certain to expire. During the council meeting, a motion was made by council member to make an amendment to that, and council members have absolute rights to make amendments to any ordinance put forth. And I think what the desire was is to move from just an arbitrary date to more of a quantifiable piece of data of when it expires. And the 14-day rolling average of hospitalization is what was used, because that's one that the state's been using. And what was approved was if the hospitalization rate falls below 20%, then the ordinance automatically expired. The state has actually been on a three-week decline of hospitalizations, and I think it's been dropping a little bit faster than what the Department of Health thought. And this week, we did go under the 20%. And so the mask mandate did expire according to the ordinance. I believe a council member would like to have an additional trigger put in place, which is when would it automatically be reactivated and have the same type of threshold? So what is being proposed and introduced is the exact same mask mandate we had with the same threshold, the 14-day moving average to expire. And then the addition is based on the seven-day average, it would move back in place. So that's what the ordinance 1913 is. And is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Jaworski. So again, just for the public, unless there is a waiver of a second and third, which I'm not aware of that, the next item, time we'll discuss this will be at the next regular scheduled council meeting, which will be the public.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes. Who was that? Yes, Mr. Sunday.
What is the process, since I'm new to the council, relatively new, I guess the newest member? What is the policy for introducing a new motion at the 11th hour or a new ordinance at the 11th hour like this one was?
Any, any council member, according to policy, has a right to introduce items on the agenda. The general practice is the agenda is published the Friday before a council meeting is when the general agenda is placed, and an item can be placed on the agenda, and the agenda can be amended 24 hours before, which would be a Monday. And then if there is something deemed an emergency, there is the ability, then we're staffed through an emergency process where this is not it, could actually do it up during the day of the meeting.
So are you calling this an emergency?
No, this was done within 24 hours.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Maybe look for Ms. Brown or Mr. Thielen if I misstated anything, just to clarify, but... Okay. All right, thank you. Item F1, Resolution R200231, A Resolution to Approve 2021 Trash-Hauling Applications. If there is no objection, I'll handle them all in one, and I'll go ahead and read them. If there is an objection, kind of like consent, a council member could be free to pull off a specific one. So item A, Abe's Trash Service; B, Gretna Sanitation; C, Premier Waste Solutions; D, Waste Connections of Nebraska Doing Businesses Papillion Sanitation; E, Waste Management of Nebraska; and F, Waste Services of Nebraska. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200231? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Mumgarth. I'm assuming most of the applicants are in the room, or they don't necessarily need to come up. But I will call for proponents or opponents.
There are none in chambers.
None in chambers. Councilman Mumgarth.
Yeah, I have a question. The Public Facilities Committee reviewed the, several months ago, reviewed the trash hauling process, made some recommendations. Among those, it was recommended to ask for additional information from all of the permit applications. Has that information been received?
It has. The Public Works Director and the Deputy City Engineer have that information, and they are currently going through it.
And that will be provided to the city council sometime in the future?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other council members? If not, please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines.
Yes.
Glover. Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
8A0NAs.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F2, Resolution R200232, A Resolution to Approve Agreements Between the City of Papillion and the Nebraska Department of Transportation N.D. Related to the Relinquishment of Nebraska Highway N-85. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200232? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents or opponents in chambers?
We do not.
Okay. And again, just a reminder, those online, if you want to speak on a specific item, just note that in the chat, and we'll call. Any council discussion? Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a question. Obviously, this is a significant amount of money that's coming to the city of Papillion related to a relinquishment, which I'm not sure this is, since I've been on council, this has not happened before. And so one of the questions I would have is that, obviously, the money was identified for certain types of road improvements related to 84th Street slash Washington Street. So my question, I guess, would be relative to when the funds are received. Can they specifically be allocated so they're not being used for other purposes?
That would be the intent, but I would look to our finance director to confirm that we will reserve those funds.
We will reserve and restrict those funds in the same manner that we do all the ASAP money for roads that are... We've got lots and lots of restricted money held by the city and accounted for.
And I will just add on, the agreement does restrict those funds. It says that we cannot use them for another purpose.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Not, please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines.
Yes.
Glover. Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
8A0NAs.
Motion passes. Item F3, Resolution R200234, A Resolution to Approve the Second Amendment to the Ashberry Creek Subdivision Agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200234? Motion by Councilman Cluke. Second by Councilman Glover. Are there any proponents or opponents in the room?
There are not.
Okay. Don't see any online. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines.
Yes.
Glover. Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
8A0NAs.
Motion passes. Item F4, Resolution R200237, A Resolution to Award the Contract for the Papillion City Hall Remodel Project to Construct Ink in the Amount of $1,901,000. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200237? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents in the room?
No.
Don't see any in the chat. Any council discussion? Mr. Stube.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. One, I'd just like to compliment City Administrator. I think she has kept us kind of up to date with regard to the status of this in her administrative report. And so I guess as the last maybe point of business as far as when does this work start and when do we anticipate that this work will end? And also the fact that city services will be relocated to other facilities and how we communicate that to the public.
Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Stube. We anticipate that the work for this will begin in early January, so we're going to be taking the next few weeks to work out the final details of relocating. We've got multiple departments that are here in City Hall that need to be relocated. We're relocating to two different facilities here in the Papillion area. So hopefully anticipate work starting in early January. We're anticipating about a nine-month process for that. As far as notifying people how to contact us, we've been working with the post office. Mail will automatically be transferred over to the new location we're going to be going, so people don't have to worry about changing a mailing address or anything like that. We will be putting information on the website on how to get ahold of us. The utility bills will be over at the former bank building, former rec building over on Second Street, and there is a new drive-up drop-off box, so people who want to be able to drop off the utility bills... And there is a new drive-up drop-off box, so people who want to be able to drop off the utility bills will still be able to do that. And so information will be on the website and then through social media.
Any other council discussion? Again, just to Mr. Stube's point, it's been a long project, just keep people educated. So again, just more for the public. We've been on about every four- to five-year cycle of either building or upgrading a facility for the future. And it started literally 20 years ago with the police station. And if you follow the path, the last 20 years, it literally has been about every four- to five years, a civic building has been addressed. The most significant probably being the Public Works Building that people saw, and then the recreation. But library's been affected a couple of times, fire's been affected. The last building in that entire cycle is City Hall. Still dealing with pretty much the original building. It's been chopped up over the years. The old council chambers is very inefficient. And so modernizing it, going to be more efficient. Going to serve the public a little bit better. And then from a funding perspective, since we've known about it, every year for the last three years, we've been setting some cash aside if it was available. And so this is a fully funded project with no debt. So again, I want to thank staff, and especially Mr. Hofzus and Mr. Green. They've really taken the lead and they've saved us quite a bit of money, I think, with the work they've personally done on this project. So thank you very much. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines.
Yes.
Glover. Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg. Mr. Ingberg.
You're muted. You can nod your head.
8A0NAs.
All right, thank you. And a thanks in advance to all of the staff in City Hall are going to be disrupted. I know it's not an easy thing to do, but hopefully at the end of the timeframe and you're back in, you'll be thankful. But I do appreciate it. A related item, F5, Resolution R200238, a resolution to approve a lease agreement with Familia de Dios Ministries Inc. for the lease of temporary office spaces during City Hall renovation. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200238? Motion by Councilman Cluke. Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents in the room?
No.
And seen none online? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgarth. Gaines.
Yes.
Glover. Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
8A0NAs.
Motion passes. Next is item F6, Ordinance 1906. An ordinance to amend code sections 104-1, 104-6, and 104-7 regarding declaration of emergencies, emergency powers, and curfews. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1906?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Glover. Mr. Mumgarth, I believe you were going to have a proposed amendment that you had passed out. Do you still want to do that one?
Yes.
Do you want me to read it, or do you want to read it?
I will read the important parts of it. It's a, it's a motion to amend two sections of, or two subsections of section 104-7, dealing principally with the emergency powers. And I'm looking at subsection E, which authorizes establishing a curfew. I propose adding the following language. "The time period and area scope to a curfew shall be no greater than reasonably necessary to respond to the imminent threat." With the idea being, if, if we have an emergency and it affects only part of the town, you do not need to have a curfew throughout the entire town to deal with. For example, if there's a tornado that takes out the southern end of town, I see no reason for a curfew keeping the people in the northern end of town, me and my constituents, for example, in their houses. So this curfew, if it's appropriate, it should be as limited in area and time as reasonably necessary. And then secondly, I amend, I move to amend subsection G, where it currently says that the mayor may do any and all things and take such measures as necessary to preserve the health. Now I read that section as being a broad one, which talks about the, all of the powers that are described in the previous subsections. I move that we delete the words "do any and all things" and instead insert reasonable measures. So that it would read, "The mayor may take such reasonable measures as are necessary to preserve the health, safety, and property of the citizens of this community, provided that the establishment of a curfew is subject to the limitations stated in subsection E above." Again, I'm looking at, I'm responding to some comments that were made during the public hearing.
Let's jump to discussion after we get the second. So I'll take that as the motion. And you did read verbatim what was sent. If a council member needs it clarified, we can read it again. But we've got a motion by Councilman Mumgarth. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Sunday. So council discussion, Mr. Mumgarth, go ahead.
Okay. Basically, there was some suggestion that the words, that the mayor may do any and all things, are just overbroadened. We're overpowering the mayor. I think that was a very good suggestion. That's nonsense language. I don't think any court, if this was ever challenged, would say that the mayor can be all-powerful and do anything he wants to do. A court would simply say, well, the mayor can only act reasonably. So I've struck out those "do any and all things" language and inserted the reasonable measures to make it, make it what I think is reasonable. And if the mayor is going to be powerful, he still has to act reasonably.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Mr. Sunday.
I think what Councilman Mumgarth is proposing is better than what we had. I've kind of come 180 on this whole curfew issue. And, and I'd like to explain why. I had some assurances before that these checks that we had in place with having to go through three people, provided adequate check on the power, the extreme power of issuing a curfew. But after, honestly, and I'm not saying this to be insulting, but after seeing the group think that went on a couple of weeks ago with this mask mandate, I no longer have that confidence. So I'm no longer in favor of a curfew. I think that's somewhat of an extreme measure when there's other less restrictive measures that we can take, such as a citizen militia of previously vetted people from the Chief of Police. When the mayor feels there's a need, he could call upon a citizen militia to defend or help defend our community against an external threat, such as riots or looters, whatever the situation is. That, I think, and remember, we are a growing city, but we also want to preserve our small-town community feel. I know we do. And I don't think locking people in their homes when you don't have to do that really serves that purpose. I think calling on the citizens to, to help defend their own city, especially people that are already trained and have been previously vetted by the Chief of Police, that would serve the same purpose without stomping on people's liberty. We take the Pledge of Allegiance to this flag every time we have a meeting of the council. And of course, we all know the last words of that pledge, with liberty and justice for all. Well, liberty, that's, that's an important part of being an American citizen. And I think we should really think about protecting our liberties anytime we can. And here, again, I'm going to vote for Mr. Mumgarth's amendment, but then I'm going to, I'm going to propose my own amendment. And the reason I'm voting for Mr. Mumgarth's is because I think it's better and less onerous than what's there now. But I don't favor, I don't favor the overall motion at all in terms of a curfew. I think we can do better. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Ingberg, did you have something?
Well, I would just, I guess Mr. Sunday answered my question. Is it proper to do this motion? Vote on it and then do the other motion?
Yeah. So we need to stay the discussion on Mr. Mumgarth's motion to amend. And then we'll let that go up or down. And then I do believe Mr. Sunday has indicated he wants to bring in amendment. We'll handle that amendment. And then whichever one survives will do the regular motion as amended.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stube. Can you turn your microphone on? There you go.
I'm good. Good to go.
Thank you.
So I also plan on supporting the amendment by Mr. Mumgarth. I would have one question related to his imminent threat. And I have a little concern about just the broad definition of that. And I guess I would maybe suggest some, some other language that attorneys might use from the perspective of civil disobedience or, you know, or something to that effect, so.
Thank you. Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, Mr. Stube, you bring up a good point. This was a matter that was, that was something that was discussed in the Public Safety Committee quite a bit. And this was the modification of language that the city attorney did for us. And in the beginning of section 104-7, where it, where it describes the kind of situation where the mayor would have these powers, we eliminated the reference to civil disobedience, which I think is a good thing. I don't think that civil disobedience is something that should, should specifically be spelled out there. And instead put the language that the only time that the mayor would have these powers is if there's the occurrence or imminent threat. Eminent, I stress. It isn't just we imagine it as a threat. It is imminent. It is on us, we gotta do something of an emergency. I like that language better than the previous language. Because frankly, I don't think this language here would have authorized the curfew that we approved last summer, when we had speculation that people from Omaha would come down here and riot. And we, you know, we shut the town down on speculation. This says, no, get, get real. The only time you shut the town down or any part of the town is if you really have to do it. And it's right on top of you. So I don't think we need language saying civil disobedience specifically might fit in the circumstance. I was pleased with the modification of that language in the opening paragraph of 104-7. I think this ordinance itself is much more restrictive, much more reasonable, much less, much less of a, of a reaction to occurrences, you know, hypothesis, speculation, maybes. This is something that, well, if it's necessary to do it, you do it. If it ain't right on top of you, you don't do it. So I don't think I would go with that language.
Mr. Ingberg.
Although I'm going to support the amendment, Councilman Mumgarth, and I do appreciate you doing it, I will disagree with one thing, and that's what you just said. Hyperbole comes to mind. When you said that the one time used last summer was based on speculation, the briefing that I received was there was credible information through law enforcement channels. There was a better-than-average threat that could occur and cause problems in the community. And I personally applaud the mayor for, based on that law enforcement information, to take measures to try to ensure the safety of the citizens should that have occurred. I will go into any further detail because I don't think it's something germane. But to me, it wasn't speculation. It was good, solid information through law enforcement.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I do, again, I support the amendment. So I'm assuming we're going to vote on the amendment first because I do have a question about some of the language within the, the original ordinance.
Yes, we'll vote, we'll vote on this amendment first, then I think Mr. Sunday wants to bring one, and then we'll do the motion as amended. Mr. Glover, did you have something? Okay. I see no other discussion. Please vote on Mr. Mumgarth's motion to amend.
Sunday.
Yes.
Mumgarth. Gaines.
Yes.
Glover. Jaworski.
Yes.
Cluke.
Yes.
Stube.
Yes.
Ingberg.
Yes.
8A0NAs.
Motion to amend passes. Mr. Sunday had also indicated earlier today a potential amendment. Mr. Sunday, did you want to bring that? If you turn your mic on.
My amendment would say this would be the new paragraph D. It would replace what's there in paragraph D of 104-7. And it would read as follows, "Upon proclamation of an emergency, the mayor may further issue an order directing the Chief of Police to temporarily deputize a sufficient number of previously vetted and approved citizen volunteers to convene an armed citizen militia for the purpose of assisting the police in defending the city, its citizens, and both public and private property during the time of the emergency." That would be the extent of my motion. And I would also eliminate paragraphs E through G, which just talk further about a curfew.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Sunday. Do we have a second?
Councilman, Councilman Gaines, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Sunday and a second by Councilman Gaines. Council discussion, Mr. Ingberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the fact you put this, brought this forward, Mr. Sunday, Councilman Sunday. But I will tell you that there's no way I could support this for a couple, a couple reasons, but the main would be, I'm certainly not an attorney like you are. But it would seem to me if we resort to utilizing militia of private citizens, I think we expose the community to a great deal of liability. If something were to occur, either encouraged or done by the militia to bring discredit to the city, cause harm, whatever the case may be, I think we're exposing the city to a heck of a lot of liability. The second thing I'll mention too is, one of the first things I did when I was appointed Police Chief, was the fact that the previous chief to me had probably 30 or 40 reserve police officers. The first thing I did was disband that. Because they created a liability in my, in my eyes. And if you notice around the country, just notice around this region, there's very rarely do you ever see any reserve police officers or reserve deputies in the sheriff's office for the same reason. It creates a liability, you're utilizing people that are not as well-trained as the police. And whether you're vetted or not, there's a difference between militia and law enforcement. And so unfortunately, I can't support the amendment.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, first of all, I'm glad to see that Mr. Sunday has concerns about imposing curfews. I, of course, share that concern, but, but this is the wrong response. This would in fact substitute for a curfew. It would substitute instead armed citizens in the street making decisions. making decisions on the people, on our citizens, on our constituents. That makes things worse. That's worse than a curfew. I think and it's some incidents in Wisconsin this past summer uh, shows how badly that could turn out. So I, I, I sit here and I'm, I appreciate that, okay, a circumstance can come up that taxes the law enforcement source, sources, the law enforcement services. But I personally am confident that the Papillion Police Department, the Sarpy County Sheriff's and the Nebraska State Patrol can adequately respond to and prevent, to any emergency in Papillion and keep the citizens safe. We don't need in that circumstance armed citizens walking up and down the streets with their AK-47s or other guns. I, I, I'll tell all of you that a vote for this amendment to me shares, shows you don't share that same confidence in our law enforcement services that I do. So I can't support this at all.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Sunday.
I don't believe that my making this motion shows any lack of confidence in law enforcement. I have always supported our law enforcement and always will. This is for the extreme situation where our law enforcement officers need help. So extreme that we would contemplate locking our citizens up for forty-eight hours. That's extreme. That's more extreme than asking some citizen volunteers to help out in a time of need. This nation was built in part on the willingness of our citizens to take up arms when necessary. We should all review our history. This is not an extreme notion. And you can say AK-47s and AR-15s like they're somehow evil instruments. Those are instruments that protect and save lives every day. And those are a part of our Second Amendment rights, as our Supreme Court of this nation has said. So this is not extreme. Locking people in their houses unnecessarily. Now that is extreme. And that provides us with potential liability as well if, if some court deems that that decision to lock people up in their own homes for forty hours was arbitrary and capricious. So that's a double edged sword, that, that concern about liability. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Cluke, did you have something?
Mayor, I cannot support this. I just feel like when we start asking citizens to step into roles that are not their full-time careers, when we're not providing the training and we're not fa- providing the follow-on after an incident might happen, we are not treating our citizens fairly or respectfully. We have our paid career officers, and I believe that's where we want to leave it. We have the ability to do our mutual aid across the community and throughout the state. And so therefore I will be voting against this.
Mr. Ingberg.
I just wanted to clarify something because I've heard Councilman Sunday say it several times. Curfew is not locking people up in their homes. Curfew is asking the public to cooperate with, with our asking to do something to preserve the safety and not only themselves, but their fellow citizens. So I, I, I get confused when I keep hearing it referred to as we're locking people up in their homes for forty-eight hours. That's not what we're doing. What curfew does is, is letting and alerting the public, no. Alerting the public and letting them know there's an, an emergency or potential emergency. And we're asking you, now that we've notified you, to cooperate with us and keep yourself and help your fellow citizens to stay out of harm's way.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, please vote on the Councilman Sunday's motion to amend.
Sunday? Mumguard? Gaines?
No.
Glover? Jaworski?
No.
Cluke?
No.
Stube?
No.
Ingberg?
No.
One yay, seven nays by Mumguard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Cluke, Stube, and Ingberg.
Motion fails. Um, no other proposed motions were brought forth. So now we've got the motion as amended. Council discussion, Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mayor. So I will go to paragraph D and where it talks about, uh, public highways, public streets, public sidewalks, or any outdoor place. And I have some concerns with regard to any outdoor place because some could construe that. And I guess I could construe in my front yard and I'm not sure that that should be included in here. So I'd like maybe some clarification as far as what that means as being outdoor place. If that means parks and maybe First Street Plaza, those types of areas which are public. But, uh, so I'd like some clarification on that, Mayor.
Mr. Thielen.
It adds, uh, the exception, except persons who are waiting transportation, engaging in recreational activities at a usual customary place or peaceably entering or leaving buildings. With, with the example of being in your front yard or your backyard, I think that probably easily comes within that exception. I think that in any out, outdoor place probably refers to public places. I, I wouldn't read that literally to say it includes your front yard or your backyard of your own property.
Mr. Stube.
So, so would it be appropriate to, to maybe add any outdoor public place?
Yeah, she could do that. I mean, that might be a good idea.
Would that be a motion to amend?
That would be a motion to amend, to add.
Just so we're all clear. So it's section 104 seven, item D, and in between outdoor and place, you would insert public. Is that correct? So we have a motion by Councilman Stube. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Mumguard. Any discussion on that? Yes, Mr. Mumguard.
Overall, I, I find this paragraph bit unnecessary. It describes things that is within the other powers. And I will just say that it, I'm willing to accept it because I think it's pretty clear that it is modified by what we've now done with paragraph G that the restrictions have to be reasonable. And, um, I think making it any outdoor public place actually adds to that. It makes it very clear. That's what we're talking about. I'm glad you brought that up and I.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday? Mumguard?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Glover? Jaworski? Cluke? Stube?
Yes.
Ingberg?
Yes.
Eight A zero N S?
Not aware of any other motions. So that leaves us the original motion as amended by Councilman Mumguard and Councilman Stube's amendments. Any other council discussion on the motion as amended? Mr. Sunday.
I noticed that, uh, staff said that this passage would have no financial airing on the city. It would certainly have financial impact on the businesses of our city since we'd be closing them down. And presumably it would have a financial impact on sales tax receipts. The, the city garners during that forty-eight hour or longer curfew period. So, um, I would just like to have Nancy speak to that if she could.
Nancy.
Based on the level of information that we get on sales tax, it would be very difficult to say what an impact of two days would be. You know, um, we do have the online sales tax now. So people could sit at home and buy online and wait for it to come on day three or four. The, the businesses, um, you know, I can't really speak for the small businesses, but you know, time of day and days of the week certainly have an impact.
That's, that's why I'm asking the question, uh, because it says in, in our packet that staff says there's been, there would be no financial impact to the passage of this and, and and clearly there would be, you're just saying you just don't know what it is. Is that, is that right?
Financial impact, we, we discuss, uh, the city's revenues and receipts. And so it wouldn't factor in outside influences. And so to make a speculation on if revenues would go up or down, I don't think anybody could do that because to her point, you could be, we're seeing a little bit with COVID, online sales, sales is actually going up with people being in their house. So I don't think it's reasonable to say one way or the other. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday? Mumguard? Gaines?
Yes.
Glover? Jaworski?
Yes.
Cluke?
Yes.
Stube? Ingberg?
Yes.
Seven yeas, one nay by Sunday.
Motion passes. Next is item F five, ordinance nineteen oh eight. In ordinance to approve the conveyance of title for the courthouse circle right of way, sir, motion to approve ordinance nineteen oh eight. Motion by Councilman Cluke? Second by Councilman Glover. And again, we've mentioned this the last couple of meetings, but, um, after the original introduction and the submission of the related ordinance nineteen oh seven, uh, which is referenced in this ordinance nineteen oh eight, it was discovered that the city council had previously vacated the right of way actually in nineteen ninety-one with ordinance eleven oh five. So ordinance nineteen oh seven became moot. So is there a motion to amend ordinance nineteen oh eight? And it's now necessary to reference the correct ordinance vacating the right of way. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Cluke? Second by Councilmember Jaworski. So the motion to amend, it's the first two paragraphs of ordinance nineteen oh eight to replace the references to nineteen oh seven with eleven oh five. Do we have any council discussion on that? Please vote.
Sunday? Mumguard? Gaines?
Yes.
Glover? Jaworski?
Yes.
Cluke?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Ingberg?
Yes.
Eight A zero N S?
So the motion to amend passes. Any council discussion on the motion as amended? Please vote.
Mumguard? Gaines?
Yes.
Glover? Jaworski?
Yes.
Cluke?
Yes.
Stube?
Yes.
Ingberg?
Yes.
Eight A zero N S?
Motion passes. Um, it's all the regular agenda items. No committees have met. Any comments from the floor? Ms. Brown?
None coming forward.
I see none in the chat. Um, any council comments? Mr. Stube.
Two things. So one, we've had a lot of discussion about COVID. I, I want to thank staff for continuing to put, uh, information on the, uh, the city's website relative to the ordinance that was passed with regard to the, to the occupancy. I, and I don't know who was all involved with that, but I think that's good information. I looked at it every day and I was glad to see the numbers going down. The other thing I want to mention is that obviously I, I think we're aware of the fact that there's a potential for Offit to be considered as the U.S. Space Command. And I think that's very, very important, not only to Sarpy County, but to Papillion. Obviously Offit has brought many people to the area and we've got probably uh, community, um, servants that, uh, provide a lot of, of, um, support to the community that if it wasn't for Offit, probably wouldn't be here. So I don't know, Mayor, if it's appropriate for you on behalf of city council to maybe, uh, submit some type of a letter of support, uh, to recognize, uh, the importance of Offit and the fact that, uh, it would be a, a definite benefit and we have the ability to support, uh, any additional, um, operations that may, uh, come to Offit because of the U.S. Space Command and the fact that the employees would, uh, be increased and we've got the, the services and we've got the community that can provide that support.
We're on the same page. We actually, um, had a discussion, um, I think it was Monday with all of the mayors of Sarpy County on this very topic. Uh, Mayor Hike obviously is very in tune with it and interested in it. And we did agree that all five cities would sign on to a joint letter of support. And that was actually sent in today formally with all, with all five mayors as signatories. Um, we'll get a copy of that out to everybody. So thank you for that. You said you had two things? Okay. Any other council discussion? Okay, just a couple of things from last couple of weeks. Again, the United Cities, um, continues to have calls in regards to any legislative items. Mainly just staying up on what interim hearings are. Uh, most of the activity in the discussion has been around, um, police reform, uh, that being a hot topic nationally. And there are some state senators that will probably be bringing that forward. So we're actively engaged in that. Chief Lyons, uh, is actively working on that as well. And state senators are actually reaching out to us for how things are done in Sarpy. Um, I think all the agencies in Sarpy are seen as leaders in some of the best practices. Even with the national conversation. So thanks, Chief, for your work there. And then it was out of the United Cities meeting that Mayor Hike did mention the, uh, Space Force. And so that was one of the items to get the signatories there. The MAPPA, the Regional Transportation folks had a seminar on missing middle housing by the same gentleman that presented to the city council and the planning commission. It was pretty much the exact same information, just a little bit higher level than what you have. But you should have received a link to the YouTube of that in case you want to watch that and, and have the concepts reinforced. There've been a couple of dare graduations. And then the wastewater agency, um, has met again. And the, the major thing there is they're actually starting on right of way acquisition for the forced main. Conversations are beginning with landowners. Some of those are probably will result in minor tweaks of the, uh, identified path based on information from the landowners. But the right of way discussions are going on there. And then once right of way is acquired, then, um, we'll go to, then we'll put that out for contract to start getting that forced main in place. The Sarpy County, uh, is also, the Sarpy County Board today approved the design for the new jail. As P, I think you're all aware that, uh, the last couple of years, they've been working on a, uh, new, new design for a new jail. The one that we currently have is antiquated. And, uh, Mr. Sturzma has actually been an active participant on, on that. The county has been a very good partner. They are putting it pretty much in that same parking lot that the existing jail is. But they have been a very good partner with the city, realizing that that is a very prominent corner. It's the civic corner. It's the entrance to the city. And they've taken that into account in their design work. And I want to thank Mr. Sturzma and the county both for working on that. If any council member, um, wants an overview of that, I'm sure the county would come and give an overview of that design. But it is on their website and it was an action item of the board. So construction should start in March. Think the only other thing, it was mentioned that, uh, Christmas Eve is on Thursday and so staff will be, city hall and the city functions will be closing at noon. Except for the public safety items. And I think that's the only other thing I had. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Jaworski, please vote.
Sunday? Mumguard? Gaines?
Yes.
Glover? Jaworski?
Yes.
Cluke? Stube? Ingberg?
Yes, and Merry Christmas to all.
Eight A zero N S?
Thanks for your patience with me doing this remotely. Thanks, everybody, and Merry Christmas. We are adjourned.